All right. All right, everyone, welcome to today's committee of the whole meeting, April first, two thousand and twenty five. We have a land acknowledgement to get us going here that I would acknowledge the town of Carstens is located on traditional Blackfoot Confederacy territory. We'll welcome the media here as well as recognizing councillor Granger and councillor Burton on Zoom with us tonight. We have an agenda to adopt. Anyone councillor Jensen?
I make a motion to adopt the agenda for April first, two thousand and twenty five.
Thank you. Any additions? I guess I should ask that before seeing none. Okay, all in favor? Thank you. We will hop into our delegations. We have a couple here today. We'll welcome Ryan from Benchmark to give us his wonderful presentation.
Thank you very much.
Ryan, pull that closer just so my councillor Virgil can hear you well. Thank you.
How's that? Much better?
Yep. Can you guys hear him up there?
Good.
Yep.
Yeah, he's good.
Excellent. Well, thank you for inviting me to speak to council tonight. I know I've seen a few of you in the past. I think it was about two and a half years ago. Morgan and I did a presentation together and a lot's changed in two and a half years, but a lot's remained the same. I'll get into some of those things. Now, I think I think all of you have a pretty good idea of how assessment and certainly on the taxation side works. So I'll go through this fairly quickly and then we'll get into more of the, you know, Carstens specific, what's changed for this year? Just what to expect because as you head into the budgeting season, it's always good to not be blindsided, so to speak. So just a just a brief recap of who me and my company is. So we're Benchmark Assessment Consultants. You probably remember Morgan Stradie. He was a household name around here and in McGrath and all through Southern Alberta as an assessor. And he retired in, I guess it was two thousand and twenty one, and since then I've been the assessor. So we were formed in nineteen ninety five, supply assessment services to over fifty municipalities in Southern Alberta. We have a team of eight made up of three accredited municipal assessors, two accredited appraisers, two candidate assessors and our office manager. So what is an assessor? So we're employed by the municipality either on contract or in house to prepare and defend the assessment role in accordance with the MGA and the regulations. Essentially, you have to hold one of three designations to be a designated assessor. AMAA, which is, that's the typical one that most assessors hold. I actually hold an ACI, which is the Accredited Appraiser Canadian Institute, mostly because I moved from B C originally. So I didn't go the Alberta route, so that's why I have a different designation. Okay, so what is assessment? I liken it to we are using market value, assigning a dollar value to each property in a community or in a municipality for the purpose of property taxation. So based on legislation, there's a dollar value that can be assigned that would either be market value or regulated value depending on the type of property. So the simplest definition of market value would be what would be expected to be realized through a sale, you know, with an open market with willing seller and a willing buyer. Oftentimes you will get either one or the two is not a willing party. And those those sales we do analyze as well, and typically they are not used in analysis. But there are times where, you know, we can at least take a look at what's happened with with that particular sale and why maybe it wasn't harm's length. So in the MGA, so section two, two eighty four defines essentially property as the land and an improvement or a parcel of land and improvements to it. So simply it can be a vacant lot. It could be just an improvement. On a case like that, it would be, say, you have a mobile home park and the mobile home park owner owns the land and you only have the improvement as an assessment if you're the mobile homeowner. And in the case of most properties, say, you know, a single family dwelling, you would have land and an improvement. Now, improvement wouldn't mean, say, renovations you did to your home. It would be the actual house, the actual garage, whatever's been built there. As I was saying, some of the property is regulated. Most of it's on market. So all your houses and that sort of thing is all going to be done on market value. Where you have the exception is farmland, railway, machinery and equipment and linear property. So these types of properties don't trade often or they're just, you know, they've been legislated to be done a certain way, like in the case of farmland. So the regulated value typically doesn't equal the market value on those type of properties. So a real quick gives you a more of a visual of what actually is assessed. So you have your property land improvements or land and improvements, and those improvements would be a structure, anything attached to that structure, manufactured home or machinery and equipment. So again, what 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 is assessed? It's maybe easier to go through what isn't assessed or what's non-assessable. So your municipal water treatment plants, farm buildings, airport improvements and travel trailers. So if you have a travel trailer in your yard, that would not be assessable. Kind of goes without saying, but I do get questions on that. So assessment classes, again, class one residential, class two, non-residential, class three, your farmland, and class four is machinery and equipment. So again, when we get into how are properties assessed, look at, you know, different methods. Now, this is where it gets a little bit tricky. I, when I set the role, like when I set the values every year, I have to submit all that to an auditor. And the auditor will take a look and make sure that I'm within certain parameters. We'll get into what some of those parameters are in later slides. But essentially what I'm looking for is to do market value appraisal of, say, an entire neighborhood or an entire town using mass appraisal. So in order to do that, you have to classify houses by age, quality and so forth. Obviously, not all houses are the same, literally no houses are the same. So to do it en masse, you have to really look into how old and how, we'll say, how improved or renovated certain houses are. To be estimated of the value and the fee simple, so again, we're not looking at if something's leased. We're looking at what it would be if you owned it and they reflect typical market conditions for similar properties. So again, if we're looking at a certain house built in the nineteen fifties, we would compare that to other houses that are similar to that one as opposed to a newer home. The mass appraisal, really you're looking at preparing these assessments for a group of properties. Now, again, using standard methods and common data to allow for statistical testing. And what that what that means, those statistical testing, what comes out of that is what we actually are audited on. So we'll get into things like assessment to sales ratio and we'll get into that in a minute. So when we look at two key dates, so again, every year, we're looking at a valuation date of July first of the assessment year. So the assessment year is always one year before the tax year. So this year, we're gonna, when the notices go out and the ratepayers get their notices and start paying their taxes for the year, that's the two thousand and twenty five tax year, which would be based on the two thousand and twenty four assessment year. And those values would be as of July first last year, but with a physical condition or a state and condition of the property as of December thirty first. So what that means is if you have a house that's half finished at the end of the year, then it's assessed as half finished. Even though it's valued as of July first, the condition or state of the property is a half finished house at the end of the year. So again, we got three different approaches, just like with with any appraisal. We have the cost approach. So again, you're looking at things we do on the cost approach would be something that wouldn't trade very often, would be a special use property, something like, say, the concrete plant or a cement plant where, yes, there's a certain cost, there's depreciated costs that you can measure. But it's not it's not a property that's going to sell very often and you're certainly not going to look at, you know, rental rates and that sort of thing on a property like that. So we use cost there. Sales comparison would be, again, looking at residential properties, groups of houses within a certain age range. How are those trading compared to each other? And then with the income approach, I don't use it a lot in a smaller community just because we don't have enough data to really look at it. But if you're in a larger city, you're gonna have lots of rents for apartment buildings and commercial buildings and you can really base your value off of that income. But it can be a little tricky in a smaller town, but certainly we'll look at it as a backwards approach. So yeah, this just gives you a little more idea of what the cost approach would be. So you're looking at what it would cost new, say, minus however many years old it is. If it's five years old, it would have five years worth of depreciation on it. If it's fifty years old, it'd be quite depreciated, right? Unless somebody's put a lot of, say, capital into that building or a renovation's been done. Eventually, these buildings do hit kind of a bottom or salvage value. And what we're really looking at is, has really anything been done to that property to maybe bring that age up? Yeah, and then on sales comparison approach, I think, as I was alluding to earlier, you're looking at groups of properties that have, you know, similar similar features, similar sizes, similar age, similar locations, and getting an idea of what those have sold for to be able to then assign a value to the ones that haven't sold. One of the things they look for, our auditors look for as an assessment auditor is, am I assessing am I assessing houses that have sold the same way I would houses that haven't sold? That's a that's a big one for them. They want to make sure that you're not just moving up or down the ones that have sold. You move everything as a whole, right? So that's part of the mass approach to it.
The problem in our town that comparable sometime are difficult to get. So you go around
It can be, yep.
Other municipalities to try to get an assessment.
It can be, yeah, certainly, especially on, I'll call it the extremes. So the extreme low end and the extreme high end of houses, it can be quite difficult to find comparables at times. If you're looking at a standard bungalow built in the sixties, probably fairly simple to find a comparable somewhere in town, right? But yeah, certainly you may have to look outside of town where you're looking at a million dollar home, right? So. Okay, and then going back to what I was saying about the income approach, just one kind of comment about that. It would be the real estate income only. So we're not looking at, say, it's a store, they have X amount in revenue. That's a different thing than what would be the going rate per square foot for their rental rate, right? So that's what we're looking at. What would that building lease out for? Again, it can be tricky in a small town, but it at least gives a maybe a secondary approach to value. I'll look at it on cost, look at it on income, and the values should be fairly similar. So again, when I mean income approach, we're looking at your net operating income divided by a cap rate. So how I would find that, it really is a triangular equation. So not to say bore anyone with the details, but you can derive a cap rate from having the rental rate on a property that is sold and go, okay, well, if it leases out for this much dollars per square foot and it's sold for this amount, I can get a cap rate based on a ratio between the two. And then, as I was alluding to with farmland, they, these values really haven't changed in, I want to say, close to forty years, maybe a little over forty years. Obviously, those are not realistic market values for farmland, but that that is what the province has given us. So what happens is if you have farmland and the property is being used for farming, you will have a farmland regulated rate on depending on however the the land is, as well as if you, if there is a house on it, there'd be a three acre market site. So what happens there is you would say, okay, out of your, say, you have seventy acres, three of those acres will value at market and will value your home. Okay, and then within that, again, this would be more in the rural municipality, but I figured I'd bring it up anyway. There is a RAP exemption on if you have one home or two homes. Again, you'll see this more in out in the county. But there is the odd time where, you know, you you may have that in town. I can't think of any off the top of my head that we get a RAP exemption, but certainly there is farmland within the town limits. Okay, so asset, we'll go through this real quick. It's where I upload all of my data. So once I've got everything done, I've gotten all the sales for the year, I've put in all the permits, what's new? Somebody's built a garage. I've put it in, whatever state and condition it was at the end of the year. Then I have to upload to asset, which is at the end of February. My auditor would take a look at it and say, yeah, we like what you did, or no, you need to change that, this or that. And then any corrections made after that date. I can make changes. They just have to be loaded again up to asset later in the year, so. Okay, so as I was saying earlier, there's statistical testing that occurs between my auditor and I. And this is actually, there is a bit of a misnomer sometimes with ratepayers that, especially when you're in a rising market like we are and we have been in the last few years. I've had people say to me, well, I mean, assessments are only supposed to be about eighty percent of market, right? It's not true. Certainly, there are houses that are only assessed at seventy five or eighty percent of market. It could be that we're missing something. You know, we certainly don't catch everything, especially if maybe they did something without a permit. And we will find that usually through a listing. So somebody then lists their house, says, hey, I just did a bunch of renovations. Okay, well, that then we'll go take a look at it and, you know, that's going to play a role. And sometimes people just, you know, they don't want to hear it, but they overpaid. You know, they come from out of province, let's say, and they, you know, bought a house that, you know, it may be worth that in a few years, but right now they've kind of they've kind of overpaid. And what I try to avoid is, again, saying, oh, well, this house must be worth that because that's what they paid. So it does play a role with having to really take a look at it and say, okay, maybe they overpaid, maybe they didn't, right? So compliant assessment role must meet between ninety five and a hundred and five percent of market value. So what that means is not every, not every sale within the three years, we'll say a three year time horizon, going back to two thousand and twenty one to twenty four, not every sale's going to be ninety five to a hundred and five percent. There's going to be some that are, you know, say, seventy percent, some might be a hundred and twenty percent for one reason or another, it's sold really low. But the median needs to be within that range for each quartile. So the bottom twenty five percent and then the middle two twenty five percents and the and the top twenty five percent, they're all kind of, they would have their own ratio separate and all of them need to be within ninety five to a hundred and five percent. Once that's done, as as it says there, that meets stage one and then stage two, the auditor will say, okay, yep, we're we're within market value. Oh, that, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so then once, once notices have gone out and all the ratepayers have their, you know, their notices, every ratepayer does have the right to appeal their assessment. So what can be a little confusing is oftentimes people will say, well, what are we going to do about my taxes? My taxes are too high. My taxes this, my taxes that. And I say, yes, I understand what you're saying, but let's focus on your assessment because that's what you can appeal. You can't appeal your taxes. You can only appeal your assessment. So I've said that to a number of people. Again, keeping in mind, trying to be sensitive to the fact that, you know, they're probably upset about something to do with their taxes. So oftentimes it's just a matter of educating them on why their assessment is what it is. And if their taxes are what they are, well, that might be a conversation for 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 one of you folks, right? Because they may say, hey, my property's gone up like everybody else. How come my taxes are so high? I said, well, it could be a number of things. I've actually talked to people where there was an error on their notice or they had maybe not paid all of their taxes the year before and there were penalties. And so oftentimes it can be talked about when you're going through it with them. But if I, if they phone me or they contact me or they contact one of you or even Jill or or somebody in the office and then that's forwarded on to me as a concern, I always like to talk it out with somebody and hopefully come to a resolution that way rather than going through an official appeal process. If they're being reasonable and so am I, usually you can come to some sort of an arrangement. So anyway, you have forty five days, sorry, you used to have forty five. You have sixty days plus mailing, so it's sixty seven days to appeal. Now you've got your LARB or your CARB. So your CARB is anything that's commercial, as it, sorry, as it says there. Anything commercial, so everything else. So your residential, it's three dwellings or less, and farmland would be a local assessment review board. Anything else would be a CARB. So all of that really is just for the purpose of applying a tax rate to everyone's assessment so that we have a fair and equitable distribution of taxes and revenue source for the for the local government. Then, again, this is fairly basic, but we'll go through it anyway. Mill rate is essentially the relationship between the taxable assessment and the tax levy. So whatever the whatever the budgetary requirements are from from the property tax divided by what your taxable assessment is would give you your mill rate, falls under four categories, again, residential, non-residential or with linear farmland and machinery and equipment. And then a portion of that is education tax. So what'll happen there is, yes, the province, they will do a requisition to each municipality saying, okay, your portion of the provincial ed tax is X and then that's collected from ratepayers through the property tax. All right, I was just going to touch on one thing. On there, it does say, it does not matter if your property is residential or non-res and it doesn't matter if you're a senior or you have children in school or not. Because I have had that brought up as well. Everyone pays that. So the MGA exempts several different types of properties, so schools, churches, hospitals, nursing homes, anything owned by, say, the federal or provincial government or even, well, the municipality for that matter. That covers off the crown as well. COPTER, which is assessments full of acronyms. So one of them would be the Community Organization Property Tax Exemption Regulation. So instead of saying that, we say COPTER. So that would be your, if you've got, say, a not-for-profit in town, like a thrift store or something like that, that really, it's really more at, it's like a discretionary way to add an exemption to a property that council has a little more control over rather than it just being, the ones above, so those six bullet points above, those are more your, you know, mandated exemptions. The COPTER takes care more of the gray areas. So in summary, the assessment is a process of annually assigning a dollar value to each property for tax purposes. And then council would set appropriate rates for each assessment class based on the revenue requirements and whatever the ed requirement is as well as management bodies. So management bodies, a lot of times would be things like, you know, a housing, I guess it'd be a housing requisition that would would be done through the property tax as well. And it's, again, the best way to put it is it's simply a mechanism to fairly inequitably distribute the tax burden amongst all property owners. How fair it is is oftentimes the questions I get, you know? I have a, I have a house that's X amount and somebody else has a house that's X amount and we get the same services from the town. These are the arguments I hear, right? So really, it's a matter of looking at, okay, what is the market value of your property versus that other person? And are you being treated fairly? And and sometimes you are, and sometimes it's brought up to me and I say, you know what? I'm looking at this and saying, you're right. You you have basement finished, they don't. You know, and that's where a lot of the conversations end up coming from. So to give everyone an update on this year, as everyone's probably aware, the assessments have been rising probably, this will be about the third or fourth year in a row, of fairly healthy increases after fairly flat for most of the, we'll say, twenty teens. Coming out of COVID, it, I would say, it's kind of done the opposite of what maybe everyone thought it would do. I think with the pandemic, everyone was, obviously, nobody knew what was going on. And in the last three years, I think, coming out of very low interest rates and then quite high interest rates, that didn't really slow it down. You know, now they're looking at maybe, well, not even looking, they have been lowering rates, mortgages for the last, say, since last fall. But what we're seeing for for this particular year, the average for residential increase is about six point two percent. So now, not all of that is just market change. A good chunk of it is. I would say, you know, between eighty and eighty five percent of that is just the market going up. But some of that increase would be new growth or non-market change. So new houses that were built, you know, there are quite a few new houses built in the last year or half-built that will be then coming online next year. And then from there, you know, right, right from new houses to new garages to people who have done renovations, all of those things would count as non-market change. The market change is just just the market going up. Now, one question I did have from a gentleman, he actually called and he had a concern about his land going up. And I said, okay, well, what we're looking at is the total assessment, right? And he had a good point, like, yes, his land went up quite a bit. But what I did, because everything's gone up, like, I would say in the last three years, we're about twenty percent in the last three years. That's maybe being light. And so what's happened is that all of that value's been put on the house, on the house, on the house. So I've transferred some of that value on to the land. So what you'll see is the vacant lots really haven't gone up much. So if you want to just buy a vacant lot to build a house on, those values really haven't changed much in the last so many years. But what's happened is the improved houses have gone up quite a bit. And I'll get into, I'll break it down a little bit for you. Now, what I've got are, I've got five classes of houses. And I'll just sort of go through these real briefly. Now, the lowest class of house would be your just about ready for tear down. It's, say, a hundred years old. Those type of properties, obviously, the percentage change is going to be quite high on those because they are fairly low value. We're talking anything from, you know, fifty to a hundred and twenty thousand for an assessment. So they're up about thirteen percent, which sounds scary, but when you're looking at going from a hundred to a hundred and thirteen, it's not as scary, right? Now, the next category would be twos. So twos would be more your, they're also quite old, but they're not quite at that tear down stage. You know, they're your, in the, we'll call it the one hundreds, the one fifty to about a hundred, two hundred and twenty thousand range. They're up about just under three percent. So those ones, again, a lot of times what happens there is those are rentals a lot of times. People will generally not put a lot of, say, renovation money into them. They'll they'll keep them up, but certainly they're not putting the money in that's going to drive, say, the threes and fours and fives up. So the threes are your typical, we'll call it nineteen forty to nineteen eighty standard bungalows. So that would be what I think, I think a good majority of most towns are. They're up eight point one percent. So that would be somewhere in the average range of going from, say, two twenty five to about two forty. So so we're seeing that in that in that particular end of the of the market. And then fours would be your standard newer homes. So again, not 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 maybe over the top fancy, but we'll call it your high threes, low fours. They're up about nine percent. So again, if you, last year, if your assessment was around three seventy five, expected around three ninety five this year. So again, if you, 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 last year, if your assessment was around three seventy-five, expected around three ninety-five this year. Be kind of the way to look at it. And then the last category are the fives. Now, the fives, again, when you're looking at, just like with the ones, when you're looking at the fives on an average, um, the average is actually a little over five hundred thousand, but you have a few houses that are really skewing that. I would say it's probably more in the high fours, but a few houses that are eight, nine million dollars, you know, that are certainly pulling that average up. In any respect, it's around that nine or ten percent as well. Now, again, within that, a lot of the new houses are in the four and five category as well. So, um, when that comes on, obviously the percentage change on a brand-new house is, is quite high. It went from being a vacant lot to a finished house, so. So it, I guess in a nutshell, it's somewhere in that, anywhere from six to eight percent. And, but it could be as much as ten on certain properties, especially if things have been done to them. Then obviously, you know, if it's listed and we find something, it could be as simple as, oh, you have a finished basement. Nobody knew that until you listed your home, right? Um, that does happen. I try to catch things when I can, but you can ask someone at the door and they'll tell you, oh, yeah, my house is, I have no basement finish and then the next year. And again, they, they may be telling the truth at the time, but then you find out the next year they did have it, so. They might have done it in that year or they might be maybe fibbing to me, so. It's always one of those things. So anyway, that gives you a, a bit of an idea it, as to which parts of the, of the range, uh, or sorry, which parts of the, we'll call it, uh, of the market are going up at, at what rates. And then non-residential, uh, again, non-residential's up about just over six million for the year. Now, that number doesn't include, I didn't include the linear because, um, I'll add our last year's numbers, so I just excluded those. But, uh, a good chunk of that actually is the solar. So we had the solar come on this year, so that makes up about two-thirds of that increase. And the other two-third, or the other third of that, that increase would be just market increase. So that's the, the major change on the non-res end. So, did anyone have, uh, a few questions for me, or?
Counselor, Counselor Burton?
All right, thank you. I have two questions.
Sure.
One, we have some land in town that, that is used for agricultural purposes.
Yep.
But some of it may be zoned differently. So some of it is zoned agriculture, but some of it isn't. So do you go with zoning or use when you're determining whether it's farmland or not or any other category, I guess? That's my first question.
Yep.
Maybe I'll answer that one and then I'll ask my second one.
Sure, sure. Yeah, typically if, if it's zoned agricultural, uh, it gives us a pretty good idea that it's being used agriculturally, but it is worth a look, um, to just, oftentimes I want to take a look to see what the use is of that property. There's a-
What if it's in other ways? So what if it's zoned residential, but it's being used for ag, for example?
Well, that, yeah, and that, that, the same thing would apply, right? I, I'm looking more at use. Now, when it's zoned residential, but it ha, it's being used for farmland, is it all being used for farmland? Are there any improvements on it? Those are all considerations as well. If it, does it have servicing, right? Does it have servicing to the lot? Cause it, it could have no improvements, but if it has servicing, then the MGA says I have to at least put a three-acre market site on it.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, and then my second, thank you. My second question is, we, we use July first of the prior year as the assessment. And then like you said, if it's a work in progress,
Yep.
you'll look at December thirty-first. What happens if, let's say the town is aware that there's a significant, or you're aware, either one, that there's an increase in value between December thirty-first and today? Or, you know, May first or whatever the date. My understanding is there can be a supplemental assessment, and I'm just wondering, is that correct? And if so, what triggers that? Is it us calling you? Is it you letting us know? What does that look like?
Okay, so with a supplementary assessment, that, that's a good, good point, actually. So what that is, is anything that happens after that. So say I have a half-finished home that I've added for the roll for this year, but then the house got finished in May. So it's substantially complete, people have moved in. If there is an, a, a supplementary assessment bylaw that instructs me to do that, then I will go do that. So, and what go do that means is I will pick up the house, put it on the roll, and then it is taxable for that amount that was done after December thirty-first, so about half the improvement for a pro-rated portion of the year. So that, that certainly is the case. Typically, it's larger centers, uh, so Lethbridge would have one. I know out of all the ones I do, I do eighteen different munis, uh, two have one, sometimes three. They, they sometimes use it, sometimes they don't. But two of them for sure have always had one. Some years, there's barely anything to put on, but they do it anyway. I, I think they look at it like, hey, if we can do that, why not, right? It is definitely nice when you have five, six, seven, a dozen, fifteen, twenty new houses in a year that you can capture some of that value, especially on the ones that were half-done. And then in the middle of the year, you're, you're saying, okay, well, you, you can pay taxes on the part of the year you lived in it for that half of the year, and then from then on, you just pay normal taxes, but, yeah, so that-
For the triggering, triggering part, then you're saying is determine if the municipality has to have a bylaw.
Yep, yep, correct.
And then actively use the bylaw to do that.
Yes, so typically what would happen is I would then look at, uh, once I know that there is a supplementary bylaw in effect for that particular year, cause you have to do it every year, um, whether you want to or not. So what I mean by you have to do it every year is you would have to do a bylaw every year. So every year you want to do it, you would, uh, do a bylaw. And then typically it's about sometime in November, usually wait till near the end of the year to do it just because if it finishes past, say, November fifteenth, you've barely got enough time in the year left for it to really affect much, right? So if, if a house was three-quarters done, or say, sorry, only a quarter done at the end of last year, and then by November it's finished, you're really not getting much other than one month out of twelve, right? So, so that can be tricky.
All right. Counselor Granger?
So if, if we're looking at a potentially, say, uh, an average of, say, six percent increase in assessment,
Yep.
uh, if, if we hold our, our mill rate the same,
Yeah.
our ratepayers are going to see a six percent increase in taxes, so to- Yeah, and I, I think I know the answer to this question. If the, if, if the municipality wants to lessen that impact, we can play around with our, our mill rate so that that burden is less. And, and I think we've looked at that in past, past years. And, and this is something that, that our council takes very seriously, is, is the burden,
Right.
you know, regardless of what the assessment's doing, we, we want to try and keep that burden as low as possible.
Yes.
So I guess I'm, I'm right in that. Jeff, I, I guess we're going to be talking about this here soon. Uh, is, is that something that, uh, that you guys have factored into this already?
If you can see me, thumbs up.
Yep.
Okay, all right. And then I have a, a quick general question.
Sure.
Doesn't really affect us, but it might affect the county. I was curious about the, the Hutterite colonies, the, the, their farm properties out in the county.
Yeah.
I, I was told at one point that they were claiming that, that they were a church and that they should be tax exempt.
Yeah.
But that went away because the, the, the province said, no, that's not the case. Can you just quickly comment on that?
Yeah, certainly, they, they're not exempt. Certainly there'd be parts of it that would be considered agricultural. But even within that, a lot of that is residential, so all of the residential and quite a bit on a lot of these colonies. That's taxable as well as, um, sometimes there's commercial. Like, a lot of times these, these colonies have businesses within them. Um, and so if that's, you know, if that comes to light, either through talking to them or having somebody, will quite frankly, tell us, you know? Oh, these guys, they're making, they're making fence posts or they're making whatever, right? And then there'd be a commercial component, for sure. Yeah, but they're certainly not exempt. That's, that's for sure.
Uh, do you, do you deal with that in your business? Because you, you, you work with the county, is that correct?
Well, I, I, I don't do the county, uh, but a guy in my office does, yeah. So within, within our umbrella of benchmark, yes, we would do Carstine County, County Warner, all of those, so.
Yeah, so there's no free ride. Somebody said, oh, they're getting a free ride, and this and that, I don't think so.
I think they get a, I, I, I was gonna say, they, they might get breaks on other ends, uh, maybe through, through, through their income tax or something like that. But I, I, in terms of property tax, I don't think they're getting much of a break, other than, like I said, there's some agricultural use, for sure.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Ryan, thank you again for coming and-
Thank you.
there's no more questions, we'll, uh, excuse you and thanks again.
Thanks for having me.
Mayor, sorry.
I just want to add a comment. Thank you so much for taking the time to go through the process of the assessment, the way you do it. I, I'm part, uh, I belong to the LARB, you know, those kind of quasi-triple, uh, codes for assessment.
Yep.
And I appreciate what you just did. It's very good. Thank you.
No, it's good to explain. I'm glad, I'm glad, um, uh, one of the counselors was able to bring up, you know, about the, the tie-in between all, all of the assessments rising doesn't necessarily have to real, it turn into a, 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 a growing burden on the taxpayer, right? Cause you can move the rates. Again, I leave that to you guys. I'm not going to tell you how to run your, uh, change your rates and that, but certainly that is true, right? So it is nice to just have that conversation. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, I don't, our five-thirty's not here. Oh, they're here, okay. Oh, they're on Zoom.
They're on Zoom.
Ah, there we go. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Right there.
Awesome. Denver, welcome. Can you hear us?
How's it going? Yep.
Awesome. Um, all right, uh, Denver is from Telus. He's going to be giving us a little breakdown about what's new with Telus and some opportunities. And so I'll turn the time over to you, um, and we'll get questions afterwards and go for it.
Perfect. Um, is my partner in crime in here as well, Vivek?
Yes.
He is there. We don't see him, but I'm sure he can hear us, maybe.
Okay, cool. Right on. So, um, yeah, my name's Denver Bruin. I'm the CSD manager for Telus and I represent, um, Lethbridge and the surrounding area. And, uh, Carstine falls under my jurisdiction with everything. I was a technician in the area for eight years and I've been managing this team for the last three, so I know the, the community and, uh, the area quite well. Something that I have been, it's kind of my own little personal vendetta, was trying to get optic TV going in Carstine for the last five years. Luckily Vivek was able to team up with me and we were able to get this working. So as of last week, um, we can now offer optic TV in the community. And I'm reaching out to everyone in, uh, the council here today, cause for a little bit of guidance, to be honest with you, I'm just wondering the best way to, um, to reach everyone within the community. And honestly, I know there's a little bit of, um, um, it's kind of a tough spot with, with Telus because I know that, uh, you guys were hoping for fiber optic and there have been struggles in the past. So this is just kind of a baby step into kind of, um, rebuilding that brand and that connection with, with everyone, so. I don't know if, I'm, I'm planning on doing an event there tomorrow, but it's supposed to snow and I was doing it outside, so I might have to get a little bit creative. But kind of in general, I just wanted to announce that we are formally offering that to everyone within the community, everyone that qualifies for it, and, um, just kind of everyone's take on that, I suppose.
Uh, Counselor Court here has a question for you.
Yeah, I, I do have Telus on my phone. I've tried Telus. TV has been terrible. Uh, is this optic TV gonna be better or at least more reliable?
Absolutely. So you must have satellite TV.
Nope. It was a few years ago and they offered whatever and we went on it for a month and it was horrible. We went back to Shaw. I'm talking about cable now, so.
Okay. So, yes, so this is actually a new technology altogether. It's a little streaming box.
Okay.
Um, and it's very similar to actually like Netflix where everything's actually ran through the internet. It's a lot more efficient, um, it doesn't draw as much bandwidth as the traditional boxes did. And, um, yeah, we're just going to try to tiptoe into this as well. So there is thirty days, if for whatever reason, if it doesn't work, you're not locked into a contract. So, um, we'd give you thirty days to really test it out and make sure you get all the content and everything. And the technology is, is significantly different than probably one that you used previously.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor Cronin has a question for you.
Denver, I'm a little perplexed here. You are offering a business venture, I mean, something new to the community, but you are asking us how best to reach the people. Is that not part of your business case as to what you should be doing to reach the people if you are a business?
So I'm actually trying to dissect this on more of a local level. So there's Telus as a whole. We have our marketing team. I am trying to own this on a local level, if I'm being honest with you. I'm chatting with people face-to-face. I don't want it to be a big Telus wave and, and just kind of get lost in the mud. I grew up on a farm outside Tabor. I have my, I pride myself on building those local connections. So I want to make sure that I take the right approach to this. And it's just not kind of sloughed off as, as just another Telus, Telus marketing campaign. So that's kind of where I'm coming from with it.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor, Counselor Granger, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, um, I, I think you and I may have spoken on the phone. One of the concerns I've got about, uh, um, the Telus system is it's, especially the internet. And if this, if this, uh, television service is going to be carried on the internet, you're probably just as aware, aware as I am, uh, in terms of the quality of the signal on these old copper wires. And, um, like my internet, and I, I'm a loyal Telus customer for a long time and I had optic TV, you know, through fiber optic cable in British Columbia. I loved it. I'd love to get it again. I would love to see fiber optic, uh, distribution in this community, but it's, it's not happening. And I, I guess I understand why in terms of the cost, but I still, every time I talk to somebody with a Telus baseball hat on, I say, hey, can we, can we not do this? Everybody else around us has got this service. Uh, Carstine doesn't. Not sure why that is, except maybe the cost that we're a little bit far out on the string. But this service that you're talking about, you're going to have issues with it, I predict, because the, the core infrastructure is so poor that even though the optic TV is a great service and, 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 you know, I've got sat, your satellite system right now on the side of my house, but I've got severe doubts that this is going to work because the distribution on these old copper wires is so bad.
So that's actually a very good question. What Vivek and I have done over the last few days is we've actually audited a lot of houses that would flat-out not qualify for it and the ones that would be able to, um, handle it properly.
So is the, is the qualification related to, you know, how good the distribution copper wire system is?
Yeah, so we can kind of monitor the, the health of those copper wires. And then if we have anything high-speed, fifteen or higher, that will now support the, the, um, the Telus TV, which is, which is a lot less than it did on the, on the previous, I guess, the previous TV that was launched. So that is another reason why I kind of want to tiptoe into this, because we, not everyone in Carstine is going to qualify for this. You have to make, we have to have certain criteria. We do have the numbers and we do have a lot of the, those folks that will qualify for it. So, um, that's another reason why I want to steer the ship on this and, and have everything run through me and my team, because I have two technicians. I'm sure you've seen them driving around, Brad and Ben, and they know that community inside out. So if I can navigate this as best as I can, that is, that's one of the best success in that sense, so.
Well, I'll have to call you and see if my street, Second Street East qualifies. I doubt it does because the, the wire service is so bad up there.
Okay.
Counselor Brown?
Yeah, if you want to grab my email, you can send me an email after. And I'm going to be there tomorrow as well, so I don't mind popping by and we can, we can chat in person.
Thank you.
Yeah, for sure.
Go ahead.
Um, Denver, first of all, I think it's really important as a town counselor to say thank you for bringing business to Carstine. That's incredibly important to us. If this is going to help our local businesses, if this is going to help residents, thank you for thinking of Carstine. Of course, we're gonna, we're gonna hit you up about all the things that apparently tick us off, but, um, in regards to not having fiber optic, but I just, I just thank you. Thank you for thinking of Carstine. Thank you for being willing to bring it here. I think it's incredibly important to keep up with technology. And it sounds like that is what this is, so thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And just to go back on fiber optic, um, I don't ever wanna rule it out. I have been fighting. I promise you, I've been fighting to get fiber optic in a lot of these smaller communities. Um, there are so many moving cogs at the same time. Um, but now that with Vivek's help, Vivek, um, he's a great resource and the two of us are coming up with creative ways. I, I don't wanna get anyone's hope up, hopes up. It's not on the roadmap, but there has been a new general manager for Alberta South. Um, and just recently at a higher level, there's a new director for Alberta. So we do kind of have new people in, in play now. So I will still be shouting from the mountaintops and doing what I can to, to try to get in, into these smaller communities, so.
Thank you.
Denver, I just had a question for you. What are, what are we talking about? Cost for this kind of thing for, for residents? Like cost for the subscription or the contract or whatever you got for us?
It is, it is based on if you have existing services, but right now, just for Carson customers, for TV, just basic TV, it's twenty dollars a month. So it's regular forty, um, so we're gonna cut that in half for Carson customers if they sign up through myself or my team. Um, we also have Stream Plus, which includes Netflix, Disney Plus and Amazon Prime. Um, and you would get that at a wholesale price through us as well. So instead of paying three different subscriptions for those streaming services, you just pay, you just go onto your Tellus mobility bill.
Right.
Which is great. Like, it almost cuts the cost. Uh, it's, it's twenty-three dollars. And if you have a cellphone through us as well, we can, we can get that price a little bit down as well. So, um, for those that stream, and there's, let's be honest, a lot of people do just stream nowadays. So it's kind of a happy, um, alternative as well. Um, we also have our security cameras. They're regular twenty dollars. Um, we have a promotion on for that, so that's ten dollars and then five dollars per camera from there. Um, yeah, we really wanna make this fair and right for the residents in Carson. So we do have some wiggle room and, uh, some pretty competitive prices.
Councillor Court.
You said you were doing a presentation tomorrow. Is that correct?
Um, I'm gonna be, we're gonna be on location, I guess. Myself and two technicians. Uh, we were gonna set up a booth, um, but if we're gonna get snowed on, I might postpone that. We'll see what the weather does. But either way, I will be in town there. Now, um, and if there's nothing going on, we might just go chat with some folks, um, that would qualify for, for this new service.
Where is this gonna be at? This little?
Right at the Tellus building, um, downtown. They're already across the street.
Is there any more questions? Or Denver, do you have any more for us?
Um, I did put in a submission or a request to actually use some space at, uh, the town office there. Did, do you know if that was approved or if that was looked, looked at?
Uh, yeah, typically, yeah, we are looking at it. Typically, we usually defer these till our next meeting to discuss them, but if this is time sensitive, um, maybe we can look at it potentially today and get back to you.
I can always reschedule it. I don't wanna put anybody on the.
No, yeah, we usually defer delegation matter to the next meeting and discuss and then, but again, if it's time sensitive and really important, um, we can make that decision, you know, tonight and get back to you tomorrow or, and let you know where we're at, kind of thing, so.
Okay. I think regardless, I will be there with my technicians tomorrow. And if it works out, great. Otherwise, I would, if we get approval from the board there, we would just do another event at the end of April, so.
Awesome.
We'll make it work one year, another.
Again, yeah, thanks for the presentation. We're always happy for new incoming things and, you know, another option for the residents in town and, and we appreciate it and we will be in touch and thanks again.
I appreciate the time.
Thank you guys. Thank you.
Cheers.
All right. We are on time, yeah. Do we wanna head into our next one? Is he still on here or is he? Froze?
Yeah.
All right, yeah, we're good? Okay, we'll go into our next delegation, the Carson and District Ag Society. Um, you guys wanna come up to the lecter and then give us a presentation or what's going on, what's new and go from there.
My name's Sean Pitcher and I'm the treasurer at the Carson Ag Society.
I'm Frank Beavens. I'm a vice president up there.
Thank you guys for being here.
Um, Honorable Mayor Cronin and esteemed, uh, town councillors. Uh, we, we wanna thank you for your dedication to our town and your tireless efforts to make our community thrive. But today, we have an exciting new proposal that will truly put your leadership skills to the test, both governance and grit.
As part of our ongoing commitment to the community engagements, we are thrilled to announce a brand new, the first annual Carson Council Bull Riding Challenge. That's right. This summer, we are fighting and strongly encourage each of you to saddle up and grab on tight and show the town just how tough of a leaders you really are.
All right, thanks for coming, folks.
Now, we know some of you might be thinking, I've never ridden a bull before, but don't worry, we've taken care of everything.
Yeah.
We've hand-selected the finest bulls in the region, all of whom have been personally trained or at least stared at by professionals. And Mayor Cronin, we're even prepared to give you first pick of the bulls.
How too kind.
We have categories like the longest ride without screaming, the best dismount intentionally or others, and crowd favorites determined by the volume of laughter.
And of course, the winner will receive the Golden Spur Award, a prestigious honor that comes with a lifetime bragging rights. So Mayor Maggie? Get your cowboy boots ready, because the town of Carson is counting on you to lead us literally into the arena.
Thank you. You're so kind.
Thank you, council and mayor. And we really came because we're in the process of, uh, making planning for the Heritage Days. And we've had reports that the town would like to try to see if they can put on a powwow this year. And so, um, we would like to express from the Carson Ag Society that we, uh, are full, full support in the town's desire to host a powwow as part of the Heritage Days. We recognize the cultural significance of this event and the opportunity it presents to bring our two communities closer together. We believe this is a meaningful step towards strengthening relationships and building bridges between our communities.
Between our board members and boarders up at the Agro Dome, that board horses there, the Carson Ag Society has strong representation from First Nations. And we feel that we can contribute a positive and respectful way to help make this event a success. Our organization is eager to assist in any way possible, whether through logistical support, facilities, promotion, volunteer hours, security assistance, those things.
If this, if the town has special ideas on how we can best support their initiative, we would gladly appreciate your guidance. We look forward to working together to ensure that this year's Heritage Days powwow is a successful and meaningful celebration for all.
Councillor Brown, header. Sorry.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Um, you're scaring the tar out of me with that. I have ridden a bull before, by the way, because I grew up on a ranch. But anyway, um, I can speak in regards to the powwow. So, um, I, every month, meet with Blood Tribe. I sit on a committee. And, um, we, as of January, Chief Travis Plated Hair, um, we talked in regards to the best time to have it. And they have chose that we will be having it July seventeenth. They didn't want it a part of Heritage Days. They wanted it separate. And they picked that date because it is in reg, it is right in between the Browning powwow and the Kainai powwow. And they wanted the traffic to go from one to the other. And this is a Thursday midweek stop. And so that's why the date was chosen. Um, as far as, uh, um, the help of the Agro Dome, fantastic. Whether you wanna run events alongside of us, great. Um, I can tell you it will be held. It was actually brought up to have it out at the Agro Dome. But the dancers decided that it was too dirty and too hard and they preferred having it down at, um, down at the football field and Lions Park. And so that's the site that they have chosen in which to have it on. So they're gonna have two, two, um, events. One will start around noon, noon to one o'clock. And then the second one will be around six o'clock. So they're gonna have it twice. So like I said, again, uh, we've been meeting every month in regards to planning this and Moses Lake is huge in spearheading this as, as, as well as the Blood Tribe. We've all put money in towards it. So, um, but again, we're all over working with you. If you wanna be a part of that event or what that looks like, I don't quite know, but we're happy to, whatever you want me to pitch to the board, I'm happy to do that.
Mayor Cronin.
No, it, I really wanted to know if the idea was to have it at the Agro Dome, if that's what you had for idea.
Just, just to help out whoever, not really to.
But it was really coming as volunteers to help with that, with the setup or whatever that is.
Right, yep.
Yeah. So that, that is very interesting. Thank you for offering your support to this event. And you are right. It's a fabulous event to bring two communities together. We have not done that for the past three years. And we look forward to resuming, having a, a larger power. We have done every year the mini powers, more demonstration powers, you could call them. And that was very well accepted by the community, especially for those who are shut in. And councillor Brown, councillor Court were really, uh, spearheading those events and did a fabulous job for the community while COVID was there and we couldn't have those large powers. So thank you for your support. It's great.
Anything, any other questions? Any councillors? Councillor Brown?
No, so I guess my question to you would be, I meet with them regularly. What would you like me to pass on to the board? Just you're offering help and support or if they would like events, some events to happen out there during it, you'd be up for it? Or I guess what, what do you want me to pitch for you?
All the above, yeah, yeah, like.
We're an organization that's not just about the Agro Dome.
The rodeo.
We're about our, our community.
Good.
And we have a source of memberships that we can rally volunteer hours, security help, setup, take down, anything the town may need. We want to just reach out and tell the town that the Ag Society is here to help serve this community, not just our desires and our needs, but the whole community as a whole. And we understand that the town was already down this road. And we felt that that's a big bite to take and we, we're here just to reach out to us for any support or you need on anything.
So what I can tell you is that we just sat, it was literally last Wednesday, um, in Moses Lake when we were planning this. And we were coming up with, you know, who's handling what and, and how many do we need? And so your timing is perfect because we literally are putting names down to who's running the mics and who's running the setup. And I've got everything, the porta potties and the, the tents and all those things ordered and on hold. And, but you're right, it is the setup of the event that is heavy on the town's shoulders. And Moses Lake is fantastic about bringing people in to help, because we're trying to make this, um, we're trying to make this a powwow that it's not the town of Carson running this. We are here to assist in powwows that have been done on the Blood Tribe forever, for a long, long time. And so whatever is needed, we're just trying to help with. So thank you so much. I will definitely pass it along. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor Cronin.
I just was wondering, uh, councillor Brown, maybe that's for you, said question. In case there was a really, uh, bad weather, could the Agro Dome be a possibility? We have come at some power with horrible, horrible rain and we waited and moved the water from the tents, but, uh, is there a plan B?
There is, but it wasn't on dirt.
Okay.
They just are, were really concerned in regards to the dancers.
Yes.
And the hard ground and the dirt. Just that was, that was something that just, they kept bringing up. So if it did get moved inside, we haven't talked fully in regards to plan B, but yeah, we're on it.
Councillor Jensen and councillor Burton, I think, had his hand up.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd just like to say that I'm, I'm impressed and thrilled that you guys have come forward to help. I think, um, I think that it's, um, really a great idea. I can hardly wait to see it come to fruition. Powwow, not the, not the bull riding. I kinda think you're trying to kill all of council off. And anyway, and, and in offering, I, I, I know Frank kind of, I know Sean quite well. And I know they're men of their words. If they say, if you put him in charge of setup, they, you don't have to worry about it anymore. Sean can build the best, um, camp for, for youth with, when we would go up in the mountains for Joseph's Legacy or whatever, he would have the best camp for us with canopies and everything. So I know he can do it. I know he has the willpower and the desire and the knowledge to do it.
Councillor Burton.
Thank you. Yeah, when, when Frank and Sean realized that they were coming on April first, they just couldn't resist. But, you know, I just wanted to say that on our board, on the, on the Agro Dome board, we have nine members. And our president is native heritage and three of the other board members are. And when you look at who's using the facility, you really have a nice mix of both communities. And I, when I'm there, it feels like one community. It doesn't feel like both communities. It feels like one community. And these two gentlemen and, and Eric Lemieux, our president, the theme of their conversation is community. They'll, they'll talk at length about how we can make, you know, that these two communities work together, but also, you know, the, the town and the county and, and like when Sean said, it's, we're more about, we're about more than just riding horses and cattle and things like that. They are, like, that's genuinely the, the mood or the atmosphere that they've created there. And so when they offer to come help, it's very genuine and I think reflects well on the board that we have and the leadership in that board.
Thank you, councillor Burton. Do you guys have anything else for us? Awesome. Thanks again for coming. Um, we'll be in touch. I'm sure there'll be discussions between amongst ourselves and councillor Brown and Blood Tribe and seeing where we can use you. So thanks for coming, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Sorry, guys, I'm seven minutes behind you, so. Yeah, that's right. All right. All right, Tom, we have a, um, adoption of minutes from March fourth. Councillor Jensen.
I make a motion to accept the minutes from March fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Awesome. Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Uh, moving on to bylaw and policy, five A, Jeff.
Yeah, thank you. Um, just seeking a little bit of input, we need to formalize the assessment subclass bylaw over the next month before we set the mill rate bylaw, because it will now be incorporated into that. So as you recall, this is, this is creating two new assessment subclasses. We had Ryan talking about the general ones, but this is creating a derelict residential and a vacant non-residential assessment subclass. So the intent of that was to be able to apply a distinct mill rate to those subclasses. Um, and so what we're looking for, we don't need to land on any specific numbers tonight necessarily, but I'm just trying to get a feel, council. We wanna bring you a draft mill rate bylaw that, that is reflecting what your intention is with those properties and how their mill rates relate to the assessment class that they are deriving from. So I put some stuff from the MGA in there. I hope it's not relevant, but one of the clauses in the MGA is you can't have a ratio greater than five to one from your highest rate to your lowest. And again, I, that feels really punitive to me, so I'm, I'm not thinking that's the case. But remember, your residential rate roughly for quick purposes is about seven. Um, and then your non-residential, Jill, eleven and a half? Eleven point eight? So that's your current numbers. And so your highest one, say the vacant non-residential, can't be more than five times the seven. And, and again, I think thirty-five might be a touch steep, but I would appreciate a little bit of direction. But I would appreciate a little bit of direction on where you'd like to see us, um, go with this, uh, this mill rates.
I got Councillor Court, Councillor Burton, Mayor-
Councillor Granger.
Well, first of all, so they're, they've been, they've been notified what they need to do.
Correct.
And say, five months down the road, they've got it done.
Yep.
How do we, how do we, how do we do the sub?
Yeah, no, thank you for that. And, and Joshua, please tell me if I have this wrong, but I think I have it right. The policy states that we will retroactively, um, we will put them back to the rate of the normal class and retroactively, uh, credit back any that they paid in the subclass. Does that sound?
From the date that they proved.
Yeah, from the date they proved it. So, if you're right, councillor, we issue in May, they come in in September fifteenth and say, hey, I got everything done. Okay, now we will put you back and, and retroactively, uh, credit you.
That's my question, thank you.
Yeah. Councillor Burton?
So, my question is, first of all, I'm, I'm very in support of doing this, but before we talk about what, what multiple or what rate, Joshua, could you give us your assessment of the ones who haven't done anything yet or are they?
How many?
I'll just leave it to you to give us your assessment.
Like how many, I guess?
So there's a certain percentage, like maybe two thirds last we talked, that, that haven't done anything. And if you could just comment on why that might be the case? Or what their attitude was about it or those kinds of things, to help give us guidance where we should land this.
Yeah, tough, tough question. Just kind of, uh, having not heard much from anyone, I would say a lot of them probably have just ignored it and really you're not going to hear from them until they get the tax notice. And at that point, it's going to be too late. So, mm, I would just purely be speculating, councillor.
Okay, so, so it may, if they're not even communicating with you, maybe they don't take it seriously or indifference, that kind of thing.
Yeah, that'd be largely where I think things are at.
Yeah, to me that weighs in my scale of, of what I do at the rate.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor?
Yeah, my question was a little similar to the one of councillor. And I also think that, I mean, we have the ability to do it from, uh, what it is today, the rate, right up to a multiple of five, which seems, like Jeff said, horribly punitive. My point of view would be more if we start to double it this year, it would already be a wake-up call for a lot. But up to you.
Councillor Granger?
Yeah, I, I guess Jeff, uh, tell me or, um, if, if I've have this right. So the policy says if the property falls into one of the subclasses because it's derelict, the, the bylaw allows us to assess their taxes at a higher rate to get their attention to, um, to kind of force them to do something, uh, through a, through additional taxes. So what you're asking us is how much should that be? Because that's not in the bylaw. Is that something that's done, it could be different every year or this is the first time and we just haven't pinned a number on it? Is that correct?
That's correct, councillor. So we've never had a subclass. Uh, you will, councillor, future councils will review this annually, correct?
Okay, so I, I, I like what the mayor said. I, I had it in my mind. I figured that's what you were asking us to do. I think, uh, double, double the rate, uh, to get their attention and to show them that we're serious. It's our bylaw. We can, we can, we can put whatever number we want on it. And I think a number like two, two times, um, at least to start with and see how that goes. And if, if people still think, well, they'll pay the additional taxes and still not improve, then the next council next year can make it three, for example, right?
Uh, Councillor Brown?
So, I just wanted to double check. So, if council agrees that we double it, so Joe Blow gets his tax notice, it's now been doubled, can he then come to council and say, uh, jokes, I actually will do everything that is listed and will, like, you know what I mean? Like, I'm, I'm just wondering, like, they're going to have a come to Jesus moment when, when your taxes are double. I definitely would. And so I'm just thinking, do we still give them the opportunity to go ahead and fix the problem? Or do we just, I would like to, you know, we double it, okay. But if they so choose then to come to council and say, no, this is, I'm actually willing to do the things that have been asked, do we then, I would prefer then saying, okay, make it so and we'll go from there.
If I might, councillor, so your policy essentially says that you will give them relief based on evidence, not promises. Now, I am summarizing the wording. It doesn't say that, but-
I, I hear you.
What it's saying is you can't come and say, look, council, I'm going to take care of it this year, I promise. Okay, we'll take you out. It's like, go do it and then bring us evidence. And then we will credit you back that difference from the time you were compliant.
Yep.
So that's, that's how it was worded because our concern, and, and we, we talked about this, was it's true that everyone has a story and everyone's got-
Agreed.
Their reasons and you're going to have this, you, you're put in an impossible situation to try and adjudicate which ones are legitimate and which ones aren't.
Agreed.
Really difficult.
I, I guess my, my concern was that making sure that we are-
It's retroactive.
Yeah, that it's, that, that we are giving them the opportunity. And it sounds like that's great. So that's what I'm after. Thank you.
Councillor Court?
Okay, um, doubling the rate on derelict properties, what if that property is part of their residence?
So-
We can't double the residence tax.
So if they have, like, uh, make sure I understand, councillor, they've got an old garage in the back that's completely dilapidated and falling apart. Um, it would currently apply to the assessment of the total assessment of the property.
Why? That might wake them up.
Well, that's a whole idea.
And it's a challenge, one of the reasons why councillor is, yes, it might do what you said, but two, many times we can't split that out very well.
Right.
Like, it's not obvious that that dilapidated garage is worth X dollars. And in that state, it might pay thirty dollars in tax anyway and sixty dollars doesn't bother them. One of the things, no, go ahead if there's any other questions.
I was, I was just going to ask something, Councillor Burton, um, how many properties approximately are in town that this would apply to? Do we have a, like, kind of a number?
This spreadsheet you sent me, is that the most current?
Like resident, is there, there's obviously business or-
Residential, there's fifteen.
Okay.
And non-residential, there's nine.
Okay, Councillor Burton?
Well, I was just going to comment that I think we have been very fair in both, both the wording of the bylaw and the process. So, we've given people a notice, Joshua contacted lots of them personally. It wasn't just to get a letter in the mail.
Yeah.
Uh, we've given them our opportunity for discussion. We've given them time. We gave them a heads up. We could have just passed the bylaw, not given them heads up. I think we honestly went the extra mile to give them a heads up because the sole intent of this is not to collect more money. That has nothing to do with it. It's, it's, it's come time to clean it up. You know, we've, we've turned a blind eye, we've, all the rest of it. We're past that. But I think we've been very fair about it. I think doubling does feel like the right place to start because it has to be big enough for the, if they're not even getting a hold of us, you know, they need some kind of wake-up call to help them deal with it. So I think that accomplishes that. I don't think it's, more than that feels like it might be too much. But the other thing is, if your property is, is of the kind that would fall into this category, you are affecting your neighbors. How are you doing that? You're paying less tax because your thing is worth less. You're reducing their property tax because they're your neighbor next door. So there is a very real cost to your neighbors. And so I, I think this takes all of that into account and is a very fair and equitable way to deal with it, but that still gets results, hopefully.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yep. One thing, Councillor Kenley, I was just confirming and I always have to refer to Josh when he takes care of all this stuff, so I appreciate his memory. Um, one of the things we'd like to propose to you in the budget is, uh, when we bring the mill rate budget into place, we would like to reserve any additional revenues generated through this program, so not just to put them into general revenues and use them for the, um, remediation and cleanup that we have for properties in town. Because sometimes we incur great costs to get a property compliant. And, um, and so we'd like to keep that earmarked and then use it for beautification initiatives throughout the community. So, what, what you'll see is we will, in the budget, we'll have a line that shows some revenue. We'll probably take a bit of an average, you know, not the whole thing. And then we'll, we'll earmark that for bylaw enforcement initiatives related to unsightly premises and those types of things. So that it's not, it's not just a cash cow type of idea, right? Uh, we're trying to use it to support those initiatives. I just want to make a correction, it's minor, but there's sixteen residential properties, not fifteen. I didn't count well there on the spot. So, um, so I'm hearing doubling and I appreciate that. What we'll do is we will, uh, Jill has a great spreadsheet with each of the properties, their total assessment, current tax, and what the additional would cost them. Um, not that I want to go through every property with you because I don't think we want to get into necessarily those details, but I think we will bring you back, hey, here's kind of impact on properties. Here's what that looks like in real dollars. Just because sometimes percentages don't mean a whole bunch until you see the real dollars. And we'll have a look at what that means. I don't know the answer to that across the board until we go through this either. So we'll have a good look at that, um, and we'll, we'll go from there. So I appreciate that if, if that's the message to take back is we'll look at a double.
Yeah, I was just going to say, like, um, like you just said, percentages don't mean much on-
Yeah.
Maybe someone's would rather just pay the extra two or four hundred dollars instead of doing anything about their property. So, I'm not saying that that's all it'll cost someone, but-
Yeah.
Maybe the convenience of paying, they just don't care enough and four hundred dollars is better than taking care of what the bigger issue is, so.
What I, what I would suggest-
Well, I was going to ask, like, um, can you remind me again before, how many years is it before it goes into arrears or tax, tax sale?
About three years.
Three years, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, you know, we'll bring this back to you, but the impact on just an instant, a quick double is anywhere from just over five hundred dollars a year, all the way up to forty, five hundred dollars a year. Right? And so I just want you to be well aware of the real dollar impact before we, we get to that. But we have, Jill, we got it, we got a set mill rate the, the second week of May, right?
The first council.
The first council meeting in May. So, yeah, we've got next, we got this month to kind of play with this over the next three meetings. And so we'll bring you a little bit of some scenarios so that you're well aware of what that looks like.
Uh, Councillor Burton has had one more question on this.
I'll pass for now, thanks.
Okay. Um, any more on this, councillors? Mayor?
Do you need a motion, uh, Jeff?
No, and again, you can't, I mean, you could make a recommendation, but I think we've just got, we've got the feel for it. You'll have to move, you'll have to move the mill rate bylaw.
Yeah.
So that'll require three readings.
Yeah, let's bring us back someone for next meeting.
Yeah, you bet.
All right, uh, five B, fire service level policy.
Yeah, sorry, I closed the wrong window on my tablet. I apologize. Give me one, give me ten seconds here. So I had met with, um, Mr. Millward and Melvin, uh, this last week at the county. We were talking about some of the feedback that we received, uh, from each of our respective councils, Murray and I, on the fire service level policy. I wanted to just bring something to your attention that I thought was, we had some good, uh, resolution here on some of the items. One of the concerns that stemmed from our meeting was the inspections and what that was going to look like going forward. You'll, if, if you have the document up, down in the prevention and inspection section, uh, we had a couple of small, there was a spelling error, but we had a couple of small changes and just added the words, "Building shall be inspected by complaint or request so far as resources allow." Now, that is a, that is a very intentional sentence because the QMP currently says that our responsibility to inspect only extends so far as there's been a complaint. So if someone complains about a property, then we will go inspect it. Now, the fire department, to their credit, does a number of public sector buildings particularly almost every year. So our schools and, you know, a lot of our public buildings are done. But the privately owned public buildings, if you, publicly accessible buildings, are done on a complaint or request basis. So, um, one of the questions that always comes up with this is how much, how much manpower and how much resource do we have to do a lot of inspections? Councillor Granger, we've talked about this quite a bit. I know it's a concern here, but we all know that we don't have the ability to say that every commercial building will be inspected annually. We simply don't have the manpower. And so under this service level agreement, the question was, okay, if the town wants enhanced inspections, what is the associated cost with that? How, how much time and money are inspections taking in the community? And we, we have anecdotal idea about that, but we don't have great evidence. So, the thought for this amendment, and I would request your feedback on it, is we essentially have written it to duplicate status quo. You as a council, by the way, have the opportunity to request inspections under the QMP. So if there were properties of concern, you could say, hey, Jeff, we'd like you to specifically request from the fire department that the following properties are inspected. So and Danny said they will absolutely get after that. Again, as long as it's not the entire list of non-residential properties. Um, but the other thing we're going to do as we're looking at this transition is Danny is going to track the hours that him and the deputy are taking on inspections in the town. So we have an idea of the dollar value of the labor that's going into inspections. That way, next year, I can come back to council and say, council, if we want to double that, we have a really good idea what that means for labor. And our requisition from the county will include that additional charge to deliver the additional service. But frankly, we don't have great data on what that number should look like. And so as we enter into this new agreement, Murray's saying, I don't know what I would bill you because we don't know yet. And Danny is, was very agreeable that his firefighters who will inspect will track inspection hours in the town. So my recommendation at this time is that we do make this fire service policy to mimic the service we've historically been getting for thirty or forty years or whatever it's been, but we start to collect better data to fine tune the fire service response charges. And I'm seeking any feedback on that. We'll certainly go back to work on.
Councillor Granger?
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. Um, like, I get the resource issue. I get the fact that in this jurisdiction, this is just not something that's been done on a regular basis or, you know, and resources haven't been put to it. In fact, we even, uh, talked to Danny Melvin about, you know, is, are, are his people trained to do a proper inspection? And he's working on that too. But this is something that's really bothered me from the day I moved here. I've never lived in a jurisdiction where this doesn't happen on a regular basis. So I, I'm, I'm still concerned that there's a gap there. Um, but I also understand, uh, if we're going to right this ship, so to speak, that we have to look at it and we have to put resources to it in, in a responsible fashion. So I guess I'm, I'm willing to, to go with this. I, I think this is, the wording is better than what we had before, which was not a whole lot. But I still think there's a gap there and it, and it does concern me, you know, as a former professional engineer and somebody who's been involved in municipal government and, and lived in places where these inspections were routine. I mean, I remember as a kid growing up in Ontario, the fire department would actually come to your house on an annual basis. And we're not even close to that, let alone businesses and institutional buildings. But maybe this is a, you know, if we're, we're going to make an improvement, we got to at least admit that we've got a problem and that this is a, a step forward. So, uh, I guess I'm okay with it. But I, I guess, please, everybody be aware that this, I think there's a gap here.
Uh, Councillor Jensen and the Mayor?
Yeah, I would, I would just like to know why, uh, grain bin rescue was taken out.
Yeah, so the reason was is that that is actually something that they have the equipment for in McGrath, but not in Cardston. So, um, this, we use the county's fire service level. And they had it because McGrath could offer it in that section of the county, but we don't have that in the Cardston County Emergency Services.
Do we plan on purchasing that type of equipment?
Danny didn't seem to be too concerned as far as calls for that. And we can access resources from Lethbridge or McGrath if available. So, we, we intentionally took that out, not planning on adding that to the repertoire. But to your point, councillor, that's a really interesting one under a fire service delivery model because that will be a specific service that if the county wants it, the county will have to pay for it. Because there's no chance of that happening in town.
Sure.
And so, yeah, this, this starts to delineate what services are specifically theirs and what specific is ours. So we've just taken it out of ours.
Okay, I get, I guess my main concern is having been in a grain bin and sunk. Like, it's easy to do.
Well, and again, councillor, if the county echoes your concern, they can put that in their policy and pay for it. Absolutely.
Mayor?
Yeah.
So, to go back to the idea of the inspection of, um, building, you said that council could bring forward their concern regarding a-
Correct.
A resident, uh, uh, a business.
Yep.
So I was wondering, is that- So I was wondering, is that something that we would want to add under fire inspection? That council, under whatever complaint that comes to them regarding that and we, regarding the need for an inspection, could ask for that service?
So if we, yes, the short answer is, we could definitely put that in there. The sentence is intended to mean any complaint or request would be honored.
All right.
Yeah, that, that was intended to, it's, that's mimicking our QMP, and it isn't specific as to who has to originate the complaint.
Okay, all right, so that's, was my concern.
Yeah. Sorry, QMP, Quality Management Plan, I'm sorry, I was using some acronyms there, but...
Yeah, no.
That's the regulation we have to follow?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we all knew that, so...
Okay, okay. Good, counselor.
Anything else, councilors, mayor, on this subject?
No, I think the policy is good the way it stands, and I think, you know, it should be approved.
I'll bring it for adoption at a future meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah, we're good.
All right, um, moving on here to other business, 6A Committee's Guide Report, uh, I think Josh is gonna handle this?
Yeah, so, one thing, Jill just went to grab dinner.
Okay.
So I think, well, how big of a can of worms are you opening here, Josh? Do we do it after dinner or before? I guess we can get started and go from there. So you have the next two items, uh, counselor, can they all turn over to Joshua?
Okay, great, thank you. Can of worms, I'm excited.
But no, I think it's well-written.
Mm-hmm, very well-written.
Okay, thank you, council. Uh, so what this report is, it's just intended to be a guide, uh, not to really get into the, the fine, nitty-gritty details of each and every organization's governance and legal structure. Um, I felt it best to just try to keep it simple, to help you through those instances where you're faced with decisions of competing interests. So, just basically put everything into two groups. Uh, it's gonna be a subordinate, uh, organization, or a per, or a parallel. So subordinate, when you're, uh, on that board or committee or association, uh, just to think of it in terms of an extension of council, um, and you're prioritizing the interest of the municipality. Parallel, um, go ahead and prioritize the interest of the organization, and the reason I think that that is something that you can be relaxed about doing is you have the rest of the majority that sits at the table, um, not on that organization. So if there's a concern about the organization ultimately not providing the kind of benefit that you're hoping for from the arrangement, the majority can sever the partnership. And, um, the ongoing discussions about the library board and budget is a good example of that. You know, there's other voices that can say, you know, from our perspective, maybe we want to make some changes, uh, and from the perspective of the one that sits on the board, they can just focus on being an effective member, uh, of that board. So hopefully it's of use to you. Uh, any questions on it?
Uh, we have Counselor Brown, Counselor Court, and Mayor.
So, uh, as I was reading this, I will say, it was amazing. I think it's incredibly well-written. A lot of the things, um, that I have, you know, that as a counselor in the last seven and a half years that have come up, you've nailed it. So I, I just think this is fantastic. Where was this five, seven years ago? It's really, really good, thank you.
Counselor Court?
Yeah, specifically, we're on, a couple of us are on the Chinook Foundation. When we represent that board, we represent that board...
That's what it says.
At whatever...
That's what it says.
Cost to the coun, to the council, I guess. So where do we stand on that? Are we...
You're parall...
Are we tied to that, or...
Yeah.
Do we do what council wants?
So, uh, yeah, goo, a good example to just kind of walk through how a parallelo, a parallel organization would work, and they're one of the unique ones where their governing documents state explicitly that if you're on a member, if you're a member, you need to prioritize the interest of, uh, of Chinook Foundation. So, you know, just thinking of it in terms of that hat on, when I'm in that meeting, you know, uh, whoever is around that table is saying, this is the money we need, this is how we need to plan for the future, great, sounds good, that makes a ton of sense. And you bring it back here, and council can agree or disagree.
That's good for me, thank you.
Okay.
Mayor Cronin?
Yeah, it's a little bit of a similar idea, but specifically regarding the library, when you said with parallel organization, you can severe your, your, uh, link to that organization...
Sever.
Is severe.
Sever. Sever.
Yeah, sever.
Severe sever.
Whatever, that word anyways.
Severe, whatever.
Sever, yeah. Those are cognate, and I don't like them.
You're nailing it.
We know what you're saying.
They're always difficult to pronounce for me. But for the library, Counselor Jensen was mentioning that through the library act, we kind of obligated to have a counselor, a town council, sitting on that board, one or two for that matter. And so how do you separate yourself from such organization?
So, library, uh, is an interesting one, and it would be one that I would, as far as, uh, I guess severing the partnership, there's gonna be, uh, different degrees of how easy that might be. Um, library board is one that, as it now stands, is a separate legal entity, um, there'd be a different process to wind that up. My understanding of appointments is you don't need to appoint a counselor. It can be anyone else, but the council does handle all appointments.
Hmm, hmm, that's what I understood, too.
Okay.
Thank you, you clarified something that I thought...
Okay.
Exactly what you said.
Great.
Counselor Jensen?
So, yeah, continuation of the, of the library. So, um, uh, under your, uh, section of safeguards, you know, you, it states as such, the municipal council and therefore the municipality never becomes subservient to any organization which might require exclusive allegiance of its members. And yet, down below, we state that if you're with Southgrew, uh, Old Man Regional, Chinook Foundation, and whatever, that you are there as an individual member and not as a counselor. And the library is the exact same way as stated in their book. And I will, you know, I, I'll give this to you, but it states that, that you are, um, that you, responsibility to govern themselves and independently, the individuals on the board do not represent the perspective of any other organization, including the municipality or the library system or the school, council, nothing. You're there simply as an individual. When you're on the library board...
Where does the report disagree with that?
You are a messenger between the two couns, between council and the board. You're just a messenger.
I was just, uh, asking where the report disagreed with that. I thought that was the conclusion that I drew as well.
Yeah, I'll give you this, so, but...
Counselor Granger?
So on the, uh, I said on the, um, Chief Mountain Regional Solid Waste Commission, and there's like eleven municipalities on that board, and its primary function is to, um, operate and maintain, uh, the, the large solid waste dump that, that we all contribute our trash into. Um, and I sort of settled into it, but, uh, there, there recently, um, I found myself a little bit, um, at odds, 'cause I understand, you know, uh, that, that this is a parallel group, and, and I'm sort of, I gotta take my counselor hat off, Cardston counselor hat off, and put it, put it on the side, because I'm, I'm trying to contribute to the, to the betterment and the function of this, this global, uh, parallel organization. But, uh, recently, there, there's been a couple of things, and I was gonna talk to either the mayor and/or Jeff, and I'll do that when I've got more time, but, uh, where financially, um, because we kind of split the costs, uh, through requisitions, right? And so our, our municipality contributes to the cost, but there's some things going on that we may not necessarily have to partake in, or it doesn't specifically benefit our municipality, but yet I'm, I'm thrown into this forum, sort of one-for-all, all-for-one, but yet, uh, some of it may run counter to our financial interests. So, and it's not serious, but it's, 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 it's there. And so I guess my question is, you know, should I, should I put my councilman hat back on, or, and the way I handled it was, well, I'll take this back to my council if it's gonna cost us more money that only benefits one or two of the other municipalities, but so where do we sit with that? Somebody help me.
So, Chief Mountain, uh, is a parallel organization, so that would be one where the recommendation is to, um, consider the matter, uh, with the eye on what's good for the commission...
That's right.
Even if it, it comes at the expense of Cardston. Um, and then, as you said, to bring it back to this table, is to say ultimately the majority and the one who holds the ultimate decision, which usually relates to control of the purse, is gonna be this table. So you can act as a functioning member of that board and prioritize the commission's interests, and know that ultimately, uh, the will of Cardston is gonna be served because of how council operates. So, um, hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I did. I said, well, you know, I, I certainly understand, um, where the other folks are coming from that want to see certain things happen at the expense of all, but I said, this is, you know, something that may have to be discussed within my council chamber with my council. I didn't say no to it. I didn't put a, a Cardston hat on and say, no, no flipping way are we gonna do that, 'cause why would we? I sort of went with the, with the collective whole, but I did let people know that there, there may be circumstances where I've got to go back to my council and say, they might want a little bit of money out of us, but, but these funds, extra funds aren't gonna do anything for us at all. It will do something to help the commission. Is that the right way to do it? I think the answer is yes.
Mayor Cronin?
I think the answer is in a paragraph that is in italics, on the parallel organizations, where it really tells you that you have to be able to weigh the benefit to the whole, regardless of your position as a counselor of the town. And if you can see the benefit greater for the organization as a whole, then it's something you should support.
Yeah, and I think I did.
Right, so there you go.
But I warned them, I said, you know, our council might have to know about this.
Well, of course you, we need to know, but if you use that guideline, I think you cannot go wrong.
Okay.
Anything else, councilors, on this one? I think it's a well-written document, and...
Thank you very much.
Um, thank... Oh, sorry, Counsel Burton?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for doing that. I was the one that had kind of suggested it, and I appreciate the work that you put into it.
Yeah, you're welcome, you're all welcome.
All right, guys, do we want to continue? Do we want to just go for a break?
Go for a break if you'd say so.
Counsel Brown?
I make a motion for a fifteen-minute break.
All in favor? Thank you.
All right. All righty. Do we need a motion to come back? Councillor Brown?
I make a motion to reconvene.
All in favor? Thank you. All right, we are moving along. Six B, circular materials update. Josh. Please and thank you.
Okay, so this uh circular materials, we've talked about a number of times. And um, so at this point, what they are proposing is in order for them to uh get in a position with a contractor that is able to meet the standard that they need for recycling services in Cardston, they, they just kinda need three months was what we were told, like, just give us three months, you know, everything stays as it is. And that'll give us time to uh communicate with whoever out of the region to, to manage your depot. Um, so that's what they will be setting up for June. Um, until that time, um, we're recommending that a three-month agreement be signed with them, so that would be for your review at the next meeting. And as I said, everything stays as is. Uh, there's a small fee that's given to the town to manage it. Um, and, and this continues the arrangement with uh Cards and Support Services. Um, they've been notified this has been going forward and, you know, have been a part of the conversation all along, so.
Can, can I ask a question? So exactly what are they going to do for us? Are they going to find a market for the cardboard, for the plastic, for, is that the intent?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Councillor Court?
Oh, she asked, she asked my question. What exactly are we getting out of this?
Right.
Yeah, by, by
Two hundred bucks a month.
Um, really just permission to kind of have an agreement and show the province of Alberta that they've met their obligations under this regulation. Um, to come into agreements with municipalities to take over recycling and in June, you know, there would probably be new bins at the current site. Uh, and a different contractor would be taking the materials and coming and going and the town and CSS would have no part of it. Yes.
Okay. Um, Darcy, just garbage? What would he be doing with, with these guys as far as?
Nothing.
Nothing. So we'll be paying them twenty-one hundred dollars a month for recycling?
No, they're paying us.
Oh, they're paying us.
They're paying us.
That changes my tune right away.
So I was curious to know, are they also going to take care of the recycling of uh computers, TV and all that stuff that people used to bring there?
Uh, not at this time, although there's nothing to stop CSS from continuing to do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else councillors on this?
So just to be clear, homeowners have to take their their bottles or whatever, their glasses, plastics to a bin.
Yeah.
There's not curbside pickup.
No, they'll, they'll be looking at curbside next year.
Anything else? Yep, go ahead.
And what does this do to support services?
That you want to take care of.
Yeah, so they are going to pivot to a lot of other activities that they're doing. They knew that recycling was something that they weren't gonna be able to participate in in this way going forward, so uh, they've been notified and they're making changes and, you know, they're okay with it.
Councillor Court?
Uh, the building, it's not in very good shape. Are they gonna use that building? Are we gonna have totally different, separate from that that recycling building up there by the?
Well, they, they're, CSS is still using it and um, I'm not exactly sure what their plans are for it, but
Okay.
yeah, we'll see.
But it's our building, isn't it?
Yep.
It is.
It is our building.
It's not very good shape, that's all.
Okay, there's nothing on that. Um, we will jump down to six C, some follow-ups from delegations. Um, the Waterton delegation. Um, just any discussion on that that we wanna have?
Really?
Anyone have any concerns or anything like that?
I can just say that send us a letter saying what the follow-up will be, so I think that's good enough.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep, just if you go hiking with Waterton, go, don't go with Jill. She finds bears everywhere or something. Keep that in mind.
Councillor Granger? Can't hear you.
I just wondered, um, a year ago when they were here, we were, we were concerned um about the, the, the loss of the, of the non-reconstruction of, of the campground. And um, you know, how that impacts potential users of the park and tourists for our town. And now there's, I don't know what the capacity of that campground is, but you know, half the, half the campground sites are, are no longer available to us. Uh, been that way since the fire. Does that not bother anybody? I mean, I know it bothers me. And I, I, I don't know that I, I'm happy with their answer, that they're just not gonna, doesn't sound like they're ever gonna reconstruct that campground.
Uh, I mean, to me personally councillor, I think that they're, they're not concerned because they don't, I guess, maybe they're not losing or making more than they're losing. I don't know. I, I mean, obviously it was a great campground and I'd love to see it built, but it seems like the biggest issue is the money.
Yeah, exactly.
It's, that seems like what they're telling us, of course.
Yeah.
Um, whether that's true or not, I mean, I could imagine it's true, but maybe it's just not a priority for them and I guess if it's a priority of council to maybe push that, then we can go that way, but until then, um But until then, yeah.
I guess that's what I'm, I'm throwing out there is, you know, like, like, like I'm offended that they're not rebuilding this campground, you know, whether it's Ottawa saying that to them or, or the bureaucracy within the park, they don't care. I don't know what the answer to that is.
Yeah.
But it doesn't really matter, they're not rebuilding the campground. And if, if that campground was, was reconstructed and available, we'd have more tourists coming through. That's my point.
Yep.
And I guess if the rest of you feel like I do, then maybe we should write a letter strongly recommending that they reconsider their budget priorities and put money into, into reconstructing that campground. Crandall, right?
Counselor Burton, Counselor Court.
Counselor Granger, I think that's just the same point that I made with about not being able to take our boats in.
Yeah.
Right, because it's not just that I have four kayaks that haven't been used in two years, it's that the guys from Lethbridge have kayaks and they have canoes and they have whatever and they don't bring them and they're not going to Waterton. So their answer is, well, our numbers are up. Well, sure, but that's, that doesn't, you're still missing part of it, right? Yes, your aggregate's up, but you're still missing because of, you've said, okay, it's all right to not have anybody in our water. We're only looking, we're looking at solutions that are willing to exclude people from the water, which I, you know, I voiced my concern about in the meeting. I just don't know what we do. I think we were very clear as a council what we thought of their policies and their, and their practice, that, that we weren't happy with it as a community, both from our lifestyle and our business that we lose. I mentioned, you know, you go to K and D, you said, yeah, I lost half my business. That's a big deal, right? Like, I'm not saying of his overall business, but I'm saying of that type of business. That's a big deal. He's an important part of our community. So I think we have expressed that I don't know what we do beyond and take them back next spring and they tell us the same thing and we still say we're unhappy.
Yeah.
Look like.
Unfortunately, at this point, this is where you see the federal government, obviously, have way more power than we do. So, and our voices, we can only tell, we can only voice our concern so much and, I mean, it's their choice at the end of the day, so.
Counselor Court and then Mayor.
If you think you're getting anywhere with Parks Canada, good luck, because we held over that new visitor center, nothing. So nothing's going to happen here. I did go see Dean last week, actually. During the COVID, he was selling a hundred, because everybody had to stay, right? He's, he says he's right around 20 every year, even with the park closure. So I don't think it's affected him a huge amount, but he would probably be selling more if the park was open, no doubt.
Mayor.
The only thing that we can hope, Counselor Burton and Counselor Granger, is the letter says the insight you shared during your odd time together invaluable and will be important in my consideration moving forward. That's the best we can hope for and hold them to them.
Okay. Counselor Burton.
We'll have, we'll have the same conversation a year from now, then. They're not going to do anything.
Counselor Burton.
Would there be any benefit to us doing a letter to our MP, raising those concerns? I don't, I don't know how much it can affect Parks Canada, but he is our MP.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if we're beating a dead horse here on this, but, I mean, it's not a bad idea. I guess we can consider it and-
Or maybe next time, next time Glenn comes to our council meeting, that's just one of the points that we raise. That might be a better way to do it.
Counselor Brown.
I would just say we need to wait till after the election, obviously. Once the election gets settled, Counselor Burton, I think that's a fantastic idea. Whoever wins, hopefully Glenn, when he comes and, and discusses with us like he does, I think that's a fantastic idea. I think that's the time we bring it up.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else on that or we can move on to our Carson County Pickleball Club? I think Josh had some info for us and some questions, his answers he's looking for and where we would like to see this go.
Yeah, to get your feedback on the MOU that was presented to you at your last regular meeting. So the questions under the requested action section, you know, they kind of focus on what makes this MOU unique. So first would be exclusive use during an inaugural season, brand-new facility, how much council is, is comfortable with that. And the novel approach to how it's paid for, so they're exchanging services for exclusive use rather than fees. And then what they're proposing as one of their items of value is the amount of labor they would put into maintaining the courts, blowing them off and getting rid of the water and whatnot, which, to be fair, I imagine you would do in order to play. But, you know, at facilities, people are going to do that to play apart from an arrangement with the town. That's just, that's just true. They're, they're not going to wait around for the town to do it. They understand town resources are stretched. So, you know, they're offering to maintain that facility to a level that administration isn't contemplating. So is that something council sees value in would be the three main ones.
Counselors, Counselor Court, Counselor Burton, I'm sure everyone wants to talk here, so Counselor Court first.
Dealing with the exclusive rights, I mean, we do that with every, every sporting field we bought. Softball gets it this amount of time, baseball gets it this amount of time. So I don't see a problem with giving them their seven to nine for four days, because we do it with every other sporting event. As for the, them keeping it clean and the two, whatever the money was, could we not look at this in a, by a year by year, see how they do this year before we? I mean, I like what they're doing. I mean, they're going to use that court. And again, everybody else will be able to use it outside of those, those hours when they're doing their tournaments and their ga, and their leagues. So I don't see a problem with what they're looking for. But again, I'm like you, it's something the town, it's kind of a unique MOU in that they would be doing the work, not the town.
I just want to follow up to that, Counselor Court. Are you okay with, see, I am opposite of what you just said, and maybe we're on the, not on the same page, that our other facilities are exclusive use, but they are paying for them. These guys are asking to not pay.
Well, they're, they're, by cleaning it up, that's their pay is what they're saying.
So this is where I brought up the $1,000 that they're giving us to the $10,000 worth of actual use, booking time that they're asking for. That's my concern. Is $10,000 of booking time going to happen? No.
No, not even close.
But, that's what, that's what, that's, that's the, that's why I'm-
Matter of fact, outside them, I can't see anybody doing any booking time.
Well, that's, that's my point. Counselor Burton, you are next.
Well, I think Counselor Brown nailed it at our last meeting, which she pointed out that we have nine or 10 other users, groups, you know, be it Little League, be it the high school football team, be it, you name the list. There's, there's got to be a dozen if there's one. And, and we already have a system that works well. We give exclusive use where it makes sense. So if it's soccer season, they've got the soccer field. If it's baseball season, they have the field. If it's Little League season, they have the other field. It, it all works really well, as far as I can tell. And I can't see anything that differentiates the pickleballers from any other association. I love their enthusiasm. I love, I think they're professional. I have only good things to say about everything that we've seen so far. They're organized, enthusiastic, what more could you want? But I can say that of soccer, and, you know, I, I wouldn't pick on anybody in this room, but I know people who are sitting around that table, who if we went back some number of years and you tried to calculate what they offer to the community in hours of service, it's a big fat number. And, and we could go to any organization and there, there's a group of people who make it work, who give up their time, who are out there on the fields, they're doing the work, they're raising money for equipment, they're moving the track and field, long jump, pit to somewhere else, they're, you name it, the list could go on. And I don't know how I would differentiate pickleball service hours from Little League service hours, from soccer service hours. That doesn't make any sense at all to me. I think we're a community and if you're enthused about something, that's why we're a community. Get involved, serve the kids, serve whoever it is you're serving, make the world a better place. And I, I think that we treat them exactly how we treat everybody else.
Sorry. So I know everyone wants to get a word in, everyone does have their hand up, so let's glad everyone get their word in and then we can debate after this. I had Mayor next, then Counselor Brown, Counselor Granger, Counselor Jensen.
I have no problem with the idea of exclusive use. I think what Joshua really wants to know is the answer to question three. The values that we, we assign to the facility maintenance, is the cleaning up that they're doing, are, are we comfortable with that idea? Or should we, as Counselor Kenley says, look at the difference, different, difference between what he calls a $1,000 and $10,000? Personally, I think for a first year, we should be giving them the benefit of the doubt and try to see how it works. That's the way I kind of look at it.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Counselor Burton. Yeah, I, I think that was my big point when they were here, was I think it is wise for us to see them as every other sports team, sports rec league, whatever it is, and they should be treated just like everybody else. And having been a volunteer, cleaned up many, many garbage off of fields so we can play, braid many lines, as have many other volunteers in many of the other sports. I don't necessarily think they shouldn't be paying anything, but I do believe that this year, like Counselor Court and the mayor, like, let's take a look at it. Let's, let's, let's work with them. But I think we have to be really careful here, that we are treating them just like every other league sports team that we have, because we would surely hate to come across as being lenient on one and not the others. So whatever that looks like, I think they're important, I think they're fantastic. Those pickleball courts bring business to Cardston, bring people to Cardston, I think it's fantastic, but I, I, I'm all for this, it's just that, that, yeah, it's just, it's more so the cost that I'm, I'm nervous about, because I know hockey pays, soccer pays, baseball pays, swim club pays. I know everybody else is paying some and they don't, they're not getting it in kind. So that makes me nervous.
Counselor Granger and then Counselor Jensen.
Yeah, the devil's always in the details. This is similar to the one that we had from these guys a year ago. And we turned it down, my recollection is, because of the opposition from the Parks and Rec Board. And, and that's, I mean, you might want, you might be able to talk me into a one-year trial with, with this arrangement for all the reasons that everybody has talked about. But I, I want to go back, Counselor Kenley, because you're the one that's got the contact with them. You said at the last meeting that they haven't really changed their mind, they're of a similar view, that, that they were stuck on the exclusive use. And, and I think there is a differentiation. Individual pickleball players, tennis players are different than a whole, you know, a, a team-oriented type sport. I think that's the difference. But Counselor Kenley, can you enlighten us in terms of where the, the Parks and Rec Board sits? I don't know that it's a good idea that we would do something in severe opposition or strong opposition from a Parks and Rec Board that we've appointed to advise us.
Based on that, like I said last time, we had only discussed their morning use and they were against that and that's kind of the same idea. We have not talked about their, their mon, their evening use that they've come back with, hasn't been brought up. And I can't speak for them, I can only speak for myself, but we haven't, we have not specifically talked about what they're asking for in this MOU.
Well, I would guess if they were concerned about morning use, they'll also be concerned about evening use. Would it be a good idea to confer with them to see what they think before we make a decision on this?
It's an idea, I mean, I can't, again, we can't put words in their mouth, so, I mean, if that's what we want to do, we could do that, but I can't, we didn't talk about what we're talking about in, to the Parks and Rec, so.
Well, I think we should.
Okay. Counselor Jensen.
So in, in reading their information, I just wasn't sure if they are cleaning just and maintaining just their courts or if all of the courts, all of the time, or just their courts when they are using them. That wasn't clear to me, if, if, if they were going to keep them clean all of the time, all of the courts, or just some of the, some of the courts, some of the times. So, but I think it's an interesting marriage, or if you will, a MOU. And it's only for a year and I'm, I'm willing to jump in with both feet and say, let's, let's see if it works, let's see what happens.
Mayor.
Counselor Kenley, I'd like to have your opinion on this one. Counselor Granger brought up a point that has some merit. There is a Parks and Rec Committee that really should have had a chance to look at that new proposal. And they obviously haven't. Is that what you're telling me?
I, again, I talked to Josh about this, I don't remember it coming up. I think we only talked about the morning use and not this evening, the tournament use. I, that's why I said in the last meeting, I, I couldn't recollect the talk with them. Again, I don't like to put words in anyone's mouth, but like Counselor Granger said, they weren't. I think we're trying to get away from, it's their courts, it's the pickleball associations' courts. And I struggle with when citizens are going to see them there every day from seven to nine. I guess maybe it is a one-year trial, and if we don't get any complaints from citizens, then great. But if it's, if there are complaints that they're hogging courts, that they're doing this and that, like, maybe we revisit this. But I do, I have issues that other entities in town are paying for our facilities and they are volunteering the hours on the side. And we're also, I guess they're just asking for a lot of bookable time. Of course, it's not going to be booked, we know that most likely, for a tenth of what it's going to cost for their service. But we also have to keep in mind, they will do a great job at keeping the facility clean, not, I mean, I can't say secure, but probably secure, because they'll be there most of the day playing. If it's someone in their association playing in a sense of security, like, they're there. So, I mean, there's some merit to that, but we just have to decide, is it, is, are we okay with giving exclusive rights for two hours a day, four days a week, and not them paying? That's what we have to decide, in my opinion. Oh, sorry, yeah.
You're good.
Counselor Granger, Counselor Burton.
So I was going to say that if, if we don't go back to the Parks and Rec Board and at least seek their opinion, whether we follow it or not, that's a different story, a different day, but if we don't go back and confer with them, which I think is the right thing to do, I will vote against this.
I mean, if I can add, I don't know if it's appropriate, like, we could have a, not today, obviously, but I don't know if it's appropriate to send a group text amongst the Parks and Rec and get an answer on that. Is that appropriate? I don't know. Does it need to be a specific meeting? I don't know.
Should maybe quarterly. Yeah.
We just met, we literally just met like two weeks ago. But what I'm asking is, is it appropriate to have, like, this is a discussion, are we okay with this, yes or no? Like, is that okay?
But make sure they have the correct information.
Yes. Okay. We could look into that, Counselor Granger, and maybe get some more for their next, next meeting, but more discussion, Counselor Burton.
We can't vote on this tonight anyway, so I agree with Counselor Granger. Let's, let's get that committee's input, that's why they're there. I think we owe it to them and to the community to do that. But, you know, so they're asking for an MOU. Have we signed an MOU with any other sports group?
Yes.
Okay.
Minor football, we have an official MOU. This was something that is kind of a new initiative to get this in writing, so expectations are clear. And administration wants to continue doing this. Again, the only reason this is in council is because there's no fees.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm not opposed to signing an MOU. I think, you know, clearer understandings are always better. But I just come back to my point, I don't know why we would even do one year different than everybody else. I think we would do the same as everybody else. If they want to, if we think as a community it's good for them to have four nights a week, three hours a night, or whatever the number was, well, we do the same for, for soccer. soccer. I can't go play on that soccer field during soccer season. I know it's the kids on there and I'm okay with that. I can go before they show up. I can go after they show up. I can go in a day they're not there. I'm okay with booking time, even if it seems like a lot of time. And, and they've left one court open so that anybody could show up at any time. Hopefully that's the case, you know, that there is one available, but I don't see why we wouldn't charge something if we charge everybody else something. I, I can't distinguish one from the other. Being new doesn't do it for me. I think they're going to be fantastic, but I just, new doesn't mean free to me.
Mayor and then Counselor Court?
All right. So Counselor Burton, you're addressing something that is of interest to me. I was trying to understand when you said that the other groups that have exclusive use at ten nine pay a fee, so they pay a fee plus they have volunteer services. Is that what it is?
Yes, that's exactly what it is.
All right. So instead here, what they're trying to do is?
Volunteer and no pay.
Volunteer and no pay.
That's correct.
Okay. So that's maybe something that need to be properly addressed and I agree that we cannot create a differentiation between the groups. Uh, there is some merit to that idea.
I don't have to raise my hand for myself. Counselor Court?
I'll play the devil's advocate on that. Number one, ten thousand dollars is a non-starter. Nobody's going to be there in the day booking it.
Agreed.
If the pickleball people want to play during the day, it's first come, first served.
Yep.
That, that's a non-starter. Uh, the other thing I've been thinking about is the other facilities are much more labor-intensive. They've got to be mowed. You've got to have somebody at the rink till whenever at night. The swimming pool's the same thing. You have to have somebody there for whatever at night. My question is if they go to use that at seven and something's come up and it's a mess and then we don't have any guys there to clean it up, it's after, after four thirty, whenever they're done. So that's, that's a bit of an issue for me is that they're playing at a time that, that might require more than, say, a football field or a baseball field or, and we know that there's always somebody there at the rink and at the pool. So that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from. Um, I wouldn't mind letting them try it for a year and at least the town wouldn't have to worry about it, cleaning it up or anything and see where we go from there.
My, yeah, my only rebuttal is it's the cost and maybe it's, obviously it's not ten thousand dollars, but it's, to me, it's got to be something. We have to remember that they're almost up to a hundred and fifty members or so and they're all going to be paying a membership fee to be part of their club. So I don't know what that num, number is, but go ahead, Josh.
Well, just if I might, the, the MOU, uh, isn't just solely based on their labor. They also are
Yeah.
going to buy something that then stays with the facility. So that, that's different.
Said they're going to build a shed or something, right?
Right.
For all that, yeah.
Well, this year would be divider, uh, netting or fencing for the other courts. So I'm just saying there's a distinction there that it's tangible.
Again, yes, it's, don't get me wrong. They will make that facility be perfect all the time while they're there and so if, is that worth to us, them ultimately maintaining that facility and be, and making it, and the extra things like the dividers and the shed eventually and that they will be, like he said, is that worth it to us to not charge them for the exclusive use? Um, Counselor Brown, Counselor Jensen, Mayor?
Honestly, we could talk till we're blue in the face on this, but I feel like it's pretty unanimous around the table that this be sent to the rec board with all of the information that we have been given and then we wait to hear back and re-talk about it is what I think needs to happen.
June or July. Yeah, see, the rec board does.
No, but I'm saying as an email, like we talked about earlier, like, there's no reason they couldn't, I mean, if the request is that we want to listen to the rec board committee, then we need, they can, they can email. Or a special meeting, absolutely. But the key is making sure that they have the correct information that council has, that we are looking at them. And Counselor Kenley is their counselor. He'll represent us well. So I think rather than continue to talk about this for four hours, I think we just, can we not just give it to them and wait and see?
Uh, Mayor, uh, yeah, Mayor, Counselor Jensen?
I, I just want to say, if there are improvement to the courts that's being done, do we have even a cost estimate of what it is they're going to do to do improvement? Maybe that could help us regarding the equivalent.
Well, they also said in there that they won't do anything, obviously, without approval of the town.
No, I totally understand, but if they could, if we could have a cost estimate, at least you will have an idea what
They're bringing.
what we're looking at.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they have given an estimate of seven hundred for the netting that would stay with the town and then they would need to produce receipts to prove that.
Hundred dollar?
Seven.
Seven hundred dollar.
So they would, they're basically saying they're going to give a thousand dollars of volunteer hours plus seven hundred dollars this year on the nets kind of thing. So about seventeen hundred bucks. Um, Counselor Jensen, I think we can move on.
Um, just a thought. So with the ice rink and with the pool, I know that they have, um, time set aside for, you know, family, fam, family swim, family skate or whatever. And, and with pickleball, they're not setting aside any, any time unless, of course, Friday or Saturday, which I don't know, I guess that's all right. But if you're thinking in terms of youth groups, um, who meet Tuesday, Wednesday, then they're not going to be able to use the pickleball court. So anyway, I'm just throwing it out as there's a, there's a thought, you know, maybe they want to relinquish you an hour once a ni, once a month or something for youth, family, whatever. I don't know.
Again, now, this is where I come.
Think we need to look at all groups.
This is where I come back and say, if they've paid for it, then I don't care. They have it. Like, other groups can't say anything. But, uh, anyways, we don't need to beat this. Um, I guess, yeah. Thank you, Josh. Um, all right. Moving on, any questions on anything tonight, guys, or anything? Um, we have a correspondence from
Rick McGyver.
Honorable Rick McGyver. Any que, any discussion on this?
Well, I'm, I'm just concerned for the town, what's the implication of this new act?
Sure. So Mayor, honestly, while mildly inconvenient, I don't see it too terrible. So remember, well, I shouldn't say remember, please be mindful that much of the grants, much of the granting programs that the feds put out are funneled through the province and so we don't have to worry about these if they're funneled through the province. Now, um, one of the grants that we just submitted for the wastewater plant, we put it in last Saturday night, by the way, um, that is directly with the feds. And so that is one that if we are successful, we will have to get ministerial approval to enter into that agreement with them. And I, while a pain, I hope we have to go through that process. So, uh, other groups like FCM are exempt from the regulation and, um, and then there's thresholds for the amounts and things like that. It's, if, to be frank, it's just another one of those things you got to remember and that you got to keep track of.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, it's kind of a pain that way, but there's not going to be very often where we're directly impacted by it, I don't think.
I was just going to ask, I think we talked about this when we met, why, why does the province want this and why, why would they reject us of anything?
Yeah. So we had a meeting with, uh, and maybe, well, Counselor Burton might have an answer to this too, but part of it is there were some issues here recently where they felt that federal funding that was going to municipalities did not support provincial priorities. And so what you had was the feds funding something that the province was not prepared to support or felt it was a provincial priority. So that's partly what they're, they're doing with it and, and, you know, I, I get it. In some ways, it's, it's an interesting response. I'll put it that way.
Okay.
And just to add to what Jeff said, if I may, yes, they don't go with provincial priorities. In some cases, they were seen countered to provincial priorities. I think that's, that's really what pushed this forward. The province could have lived with it if it was parallel, but when they, they viewed some of those things that the, the feds tried to buy with our dollars that were countered to what the province wanted, that's where it came in. So I'm, I'm okay with the principle, like Jeff said, hopefully we have to go through the process.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on that? If not, that'll end our public portion of the meeting and I will entertain a MOO.
You, you can probably safely make a motion to extend now before we go on closed session.
Hey, I was thinking we got twenty minutes left, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to be honest. That's, that's not going to do it.
All right, I'll, I will get a motion to extend to nine o'clock.
I'll do that motion.
Mayor Cronin?
To extend the meeting right up to nine o'clock.
Or sooner if available.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Eight oh one, you bet.
And I will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Court? All in favor? Thank you. Look at us go, guys. Look at us go, guys.